Ashburn City Council, they moved the meeting from the first Thursday to this Thursday. Sycamore is also meeting right now, but I can only be in one place at once. So here you see, this is the agenda tonight. And this is a closed session, possibly. We don't know that they're gonna meet or not. If I had to put money on it, I'd say they're gonna meet. Anyway, there you go, there's your agenda.
That was just the wind.
Miss, I don't know if this...
Just tell him, Michael. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if I love the candle. I don't know. Is it on, that thing?
There you go, what you just said. Miss Pierce?
Yes, ma'am.
You can hear?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Oh my goodness, I have six of six with me. I'm sorry. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware at the time, we're getting a little bit late of start. At this time, I will call this meeting to order. If you would all please stand for the invocation and to be called by the political leaders. Mr. Hall, would you give us our invitation?
Father God, we come now thinking for this day. We ask you, God, that just continue to let your Holy Spirit rule in our bodies. And, God, we pray now that, that, that God will be creating all of us a clean heart and a renewed spirit. Now, God, we ask you to bless this city, these elected officials. God, we pray that your spirit, your Holy Spirit will lead in God them us in the way that you would have us to go. We lift up this country, God, we lift up this state. God, we ask you now that you would just do this, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its own right.
Thank you. Yes, please, I'm sorry, I, we do need to have just a moment of silence for those who have gone before us. Thank you. Mr. Hall, may we have our call, please?
Captain John Verness?
Present.
Captain Corey Jordan?
Here.
Captain Andrew Pierce, by own.
I am with.
Captain Sheldon Smith?
Present.
Captain Jermaine Walkwell?
Present.
Attorney General Lamar, Colonel Locken.
Present.
Thank you. First on the agenda, I hope you all have had a moment to go over the minutes of our March 7th regular scheduled council meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll motion to approve, March 7th, regular due minutes.
Thank you. All in favor?
We have approved of the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Approve of the agenda. Approve of the agenda.
Oh, I'm so sorry. It's kinda new, I keep forgetting that. I do need a motion to approve the agenda for this night's meeting.
I have a motion.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Can I amend it?
I'm sorry.
Can I amend it, what's up on it?
Yes, sir.
I think people are down, the equipment, the splash pad. That's why I thought we were gonna do it before we put it up.
He wants to move to amend the agenda to discuss issues at the splash pads.
This agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, Mr. Councilmember Smith has asked that we amend the agenda to discuss the splash pad. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, if I may have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular scheduled council meeting of March the 7th?
I'll motion.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. I now need a motion to approve the minutes of the March 14th called council meeting.
I'll motion.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, the next item, or actually the first item on the agenda is the approval of the consent order from EPD concerning the adjusted penalty that the city received. I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Sean Hampton.
The cities received a consent order to make improvements to the wastewater system to prevent wastewater overflows. And they, basically they've got a small fine. And then they have a series of, either do a corrective action plan and a schedule of making improvements that will prevent overflows from occurring. And I think their window is maybe October of 2025. All these improvements.
September.
September 2025. That's the, that's the long and short of the, the consent order. Basically some way for EPD to monitor progress on getting violations that have been occurring from the overflow, getting those corrected. The first opportunity is you get notice of violations, and after somebody notices a violation, you'll get a consent order. If the consent order doesn't work, you'll, you'll go to another level, which is like an administrative order, which would be a judgment from a judge to make improvements. So this is the first step of getting improvements to... So, oh, that CDG grant, is that part of that? Those improvements we, we were doing to reduce INI. So that's part of the, the overall process of getting your old sewer lines rehab, repaired, so that you're not overwhelming the sewer system when you get rain flood again.
So with that being said, I know we have the funds for the CDG grant for the proof on waterways, who could have used those funds? CDG?
What's that?
So who could have used those funds if needed to make improvements in our waterways?
CDVG is a specific project located in a, in a specific area. That's where you have to use those funds at. The city also has a GFA loan, zero percent interest loan. And they've got funding from OTB to do sewer repairs. And that's what we're, we've got several projects ongoing right now that are part of that process.
Mr. Hall, do you have anything you want to say as far as what our, our plans are?
Well, initially this consent order came with a $14,000 loan fund. So it was Mr. Hampton, myself, and Mr. Lamar, who met with the individuals and shot it down to 2,500. But we're at a point where they're giving us instructions and they're saying we gotta do it. This is not something that, this current council, this is something that is, has moved forward, gradually came forward from years ago with, with your ceiling. That is, is, is old, it's outdated, and EPD is saying we gotta do something. And so this is the first step of them saying, we're not waiting on you anymore, you gotta do something. And so, please take note to this consent order.
Do you all have any questions or comments about this situation?
So Sean, you update this on regular about where it's going forward?
Yes, part of this consent order is a quarterly update to EPD. So every quarter will update EPD, the city will, but more than likely if it's a project I'm managing, I'll give the information to the city. The city gives that information to EPD to let EPD know that progress is being made.
How long, Mr. We got a fire?
Uh, this fire came in at the Laker Park last year. We got a consent order. Early in, about mid last year, we actually got a notification from EPD that they were issuing a consent order. We didn't get that consent order until January.
See, y'all, I'll be talking about, y'all wait till last minute, then y'all, the council knew. Ain't nobody lighting us before we...
Every council sitting on the panel right now knew that there was a consent order. We didn't get the fire until January. I just, I notified everybody that we had gotten a consent order with a $14,000 fine attached to it. We did notify the council. We just didn't have to, we were waiting for them to give us instructions on what, how to move forward with it. We didn't get that until January.
So it went from $14,000 to $2,500?
Yes.
We, we propose, I propose to EPD that the money, that $12,000, whatever the difference is, would be better spent doing improvements at one of the pump stations or somewhere in the system rather than just paying a fine. But they were adamant that they had to be some fine amount as a penalty. But they did, they did reduce the amount to the 2,500.
Did you get a list and how much it cost to get everybody prepared properly?
Um, we proposed three items at the MLK Lift Station that would take that $12,500. I think we're doing a new probes, new level controls, so that you won't have mechanical failures with the pumps not operating. There's some electrical work that needs to be done on the generators, so the generator and the soft starts communicate properly. And then there's a bubbler system that's supposed to reduce the amount of grease that builds up on the probes. So that, that's earmarked to the MLK Lift Station.
But that ain't solving the problem out here, and what lift station?
That was a negotiation for the consent order. We're doing INI projects. We've got the CDVG project that was awarded and is under construction. We've got a GFA project that the city council approved that's under construction. We're working on pumps, pump replacements at the wastewater treatment plant, and probably some more INI. So there's, there's a series of things that are going out for bidding. Some of them are already under bidding.
I thought it was out spilled, out spilled, well, we have a problem, we can find for spilled, not lift stations and all that. Cause it getting to the treatment plant, it's just not getting out clean.
Well, it's a, it's a combination of violations. Some of them is the pump stations. If your pump station doesn't work and it overflows, that's a violation. If it doesn't get in and out of the treatment plant fast enough and it's flowing out of manhole, that's a separate violation. So there's a series of violations.
So you're telling me we overflowed the MLK?
There's a mechanical failure and yes.
Well, we put another pump in, we got a pump, I didn't know we had no spill or overflow down there.
This was over the last 12 months, I don't, I don't know exactly, I can look it up for you.
I keep in contact with, I do.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you think that we should be informing the community what not to put down the drains and English toilets? That's the other?
No, ma'am, I, I don't think it's an issue of, of what's going in the, in the sewer. It's more inflow in INI, which is, is infiltration, groundwater coming in, old pipes, or it's manholes that the tops are knocked off. And when, when these brick bottoms fill up with water, water just floods into open manholes. So there's a combination of old sewer lines and open manholes. In your system, pre-dates 1949, some of it was installed probably in the 20s, 30s. You've done projects in 1949, so you, you just got an old system.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess, because you asked some questions that I, I have wanted to ask as well, because it, it's, it's hard to really understand all, all the mechanisms of, of sewer treatment and all of that. And we are, we have a very, very outdated system and it's, you're talking about a whole lot of money to make improvements.
Doing, doing that treatment plant, you're, you're tens of millions of dollars.
I know, I know.
Our focus has been trying to do as much rehab work to reduce the amount of water coming into sewer system.
So, so what, what are you recommending? That if we, we've got to approve this consent order from EPD?
I recommend y'all approve the consent order, sign it, pay the fine, do the mitigation work at MLK Lift Station. I'll be working on a corrective action plan. They've given me 60 days to respond back that says we're gonna do this item, this item, this item. And then there will be quarterly updates on how we're progressing on that. So, and, and you've got funding to do a little bit more detail work. You've got money from OTB that is earmarked strictly for sewer, which we'll be bidding out shortly. And that's part of the overall process. You may need to do another CDVG project next year, that sewer. But, you know, we need to know what's funded, built and installed, and see where we are, you know, the conditions are for the city.
Me, Mr. Hall, and Mr. Abbott, that, we all spoke about it, we went down there, you know, the water, the MLK. You know, I was asking about the smoke test. Abbott said they had it one years ago, but it was, uh, they couldn't find us. We got water, we got a lot of rainwater going in our wastewater.
Right, you, you've got a lot.
We keep doing with the pumps, to me, the lift station just lifted out that to treatment plant. We can't treat it fast enough to get it back out and release it, that's the problem. Come on, EPD.
You can treat your, your pumps as they include...
We still getting all this grain money for all the stuff that ain't fixing the ground.
The, the pumps at the front end of the treatment plant pump 800 gallons a minute. The treatment plant can do 2,000 gallons a minute. That's a storm, storm flow. We're looking at changing the pumps to pump, say 1,200 gallons a minute. So we can get, you know, 600 more gallons, 400 more gallons a minute into the station. But you still got INI coming in that needs to be repaired. Irregardless of if you upgrade your pumps, which we're gonna upgrade the, the Rockhouse Road Pump Station, the SPR Pump Station to get it into the SPR, and the EQ Basin to pump it out of. You've got to adjust all those pumps at the same time, the way that system operates. So we're working on that, that's a project that will be done.
So my question, we have no, there, there, we have no choice? We have to approve this consent order?
Yeah.
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 So...
We wouldn't not do it.
Mr. Hall?
You don't wanna not do it.
Oh, I understand that.
It's coming straight from the state, so if we don't approve this, the fine is gonna be greater and the penalties will be worse.
So we, we have absolutely no choice but to vote to not.
Yes.
To approve this consent order. At least they have adjusted the penalty somewhat, which, you know...
They're willing to work with the city, they just wanna see the city being proactive and doing forward.
Any other comments or questions? Uh...
I offer a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, we have a motion to approve the consent order from EPD concerning the adjusted penalty. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hampton. You might as well just move to Ashburn. Okay, I know y'all have gotten some information about Georgia Cities Week, which is going on starting, what, the 21st?
21st through 27th.
Through, and Councilmember Pierce has been heading up all kinds of activities and things like that for the week from April 21st to April the 27th. All of y'all have a copy of the resolution that has been prepared. I would, at this time, I would like for a motion to approve the resolution recognizing Georgia Cities Week, April 21st through the 27th, 2024, and encouraging all residents to support the celebration and activities of the city of Ashburn. May I have a motion?
I'll motion.
I have a motion to adopt the resolution. May I have a second? May I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Thank you, motion carries. Miss Pierce, do you have any comments before we move on?
If any of the councilmen have anything that they would have to, that we, they're more than welcome to give, Mr. Hall, to have.
Did, where y'all able to hear that?
Yes, ma'am, I have two votes that kind of course, I have the, the predate coming to City Hall, so I'll present that to them tomorrow. And I will have two copies of it too. I got some questions, but I can, I can ask later.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm sorry, I lost my place. Do we have, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
You already have it. You got a carry motion.
I have a motion?
Number 10. Yeah, we gotta go, I have number 10, we already finished number nine.
I'm sorry, but Miss Pierce had a comment, I, I didn't hear what she said.
Well, I have number 10, general election ordinance.
I have number 10.
Yes, that's the next item on the agenda, the general election ordinance for 2024. Have y'all had a chance to put that over? Any questions for our city attorney or Mr. Hall? The next election will be held on number 5, 2024. This is for, this is a city election for three council posts. Any questions or comments?
I got a question. Normally, when we have the election, the county is in also with the city, but they have it separate this year?
Yeah, we know that, that, God decided to do that.
Okay, okay.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the general election ordinance for 2024?
I'll motion.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Dollar General alcohol beverage license at 155 West Washington Avenue. This is for beer and wine retail only. Questions, comments? If not, may I have a motion to approve? I have a motion to approve. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. I'm going to turn the next item over to our city attorney. I'm going to turn the next item over to our city attorney to discuss the proposed meeting format.
This is in on the agenda before. This is a way to essentially, um, make our meetings so smoother and also allow each councilman to have all the information and enough time to prepare for each meeting. It gives guidelines and almost even levels for the council to actually determine how soon or how late it is the deadline to submit materials to the appropriate personnel to be on the agenda. Right now, I'm looking blank because it's in the council's discretion. But it just means the general, uh, format for how the meetings will go through the floor.
Have you all had an opportunity to read over this proposed format? And if so, are there questions or comments? Anyone?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Section two, Part A, the council doesn't determine what will be the deadline for submitting materials. Uh, I believe that's within the purview of the council. Completely, I want that to be decisioned by the council, so I did.
Uh, let's see. All right. Uh, uh, Councilmember Pierce suggests that perhaps if you have an item to go on the agenda, you get it to the city for a week before the council meeting rather than three days.
I agree with that.
That was just the, uh, what you now, but if you want speaker wanna speak, it within three days still, right?
This is just for agenda items. If y'all have something you want on the agenda, she
Yes.
It's for, she's proposing that we do it a week prior to our meeting.
You like that?
Exactly.
We wasn't talking about the agenda. We're talking about, uh, individuals that wanna speak three days.
Oh, you talking about speaker appearances. That that won't change. This just is gonna deal with, uh, with our meeting format. Because if if we were to change the deadline to get the agenda here and somebody wanted to make a speaker's appearance, they wouldn't have time to get get their information to us. But as far as our getting information to Ms. Hill, this is proposing a week prior to the meeting. It's my understanding. Questions, comments? Okay, then I will ask for a motion to appro- approve the proposed meeting format.
I have a motion.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, did you, was there anything else on this, Ashburn? So by adopting that, we adopt this as well. Okay. Please note that by adopting that, we also adopt the other, um, changing the agenda, um, suggestion in that.
So can we get clarification on the week? Is it, is she saying five days or seven days?
Five. Uh, uh, this is.
Five days?
A week to me is five days, five working days.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that right?
I thought she originally said seven days, though.
That's why I asked for clarification.
Five, five days.
Five days?
Right.
Okay.
So if if, because we usually set the agenda on Friday, if you have the information to Ms. Hill by Monday, or even prior to that, if you'll definitely time to get it on the agenda. All right.
I think you need to amend it, 'cause the locals, it's seven days.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we do need to amend the motion to, from seven days to five days. Five working days, yes. I have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Hall, you wanna talk about the CDVG drawdown?
Yes, this is, um, y'all have in your packet, um, a drawdown for eleven thousand one hundred and forty dollars, and then, um, a drawdown for twenty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. This is, um, uh, a drawdown for the CDVG that has already been approved. And we've, we've pulled down the CDVG money. This is our portion, our ten percent of this. But because it exceeded ten thousand dollars, I wanted to come back to the council for approval, um, to pay this.
So y'all do have the information in your packet. Uh, are there any questions for Mr. Hall? Questions or comments? Uh, then I will ask for a motion to approve the CDVG drawdown.
I made the motion to C- CDVG.
I have a motion to approve the drawdown. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Motion carries. A technology fee for municipal court. Mr. Hall, are you gonna take that?
Yes, so this is just a format. We, last month, we did the, uh, we voted to do the, uh, technology fee under the home rule. And it requires us to vote twice, two times only. So this is just a format to get us going, um, under the home rule to add the technology fee.
Essentially, we did it as a resolution, but, um, once it be submitted, originally, our local legislation asked us to submit a resolution so that they would, um, get it done through the General Assembly. And they sent, uh, that correspondence in to actually just pass it and would do it in this fashion. We've already passed it as a resolution, so now we're going back and we have to do it in ordinance format in order to get, uh, at the home rule legislation and committed to our municipal, uh, court and our charter. And it essentially says, whereas the city charter, the city management provides for the operation of municipal courts to protect the health, safety, and welfare of citizens of the city, and whereas in order to operate the court, it is necessary for the city to invest in a computer system to process matters before the court, and whereas the technological needs of the court require maintenance and installation of computers, hardware and software, and whereas, after careful study and deliberation, the city council has determined that technology fees should be charged for each criminal and quasi-criminally defined owes, now therefore be ordained by the mayor and city council of the city of Ashburn. Section one, that the ordinance shall be included, section four point one seven of the code of ordinances entitled Technology Fees. Follow, clerk of the municipal court, the city management shall be entitled to charge and collect the technology fee as a surcharge to each criminal and quasi-criminally defined pay. The technology fee shall be set by resolution by the mayor and city council from time to time. Such fee shall be exclusively to provide for the following technological needs of the court. The purchase, lease, maintenance, and installation of computer hardware and software. The purchase, lease, maintenance, and installation of equipment and software used for imaging, scanning, fax mail, communications, projections, and printing. All funds collected pursuant to this provision shall be maintained in a segregated account by the clerk of the court, separate from the other funds of the city, and shall be expended only for authorized purposes upon order of the judge of the municipal court upon consultation with the clerk of court, city manager, chief of police, and or, um, chief of, um, public safety.
Any questions? Comments? Think the fee is twenty-five dollars per citation or per conviction?
Per citation.
Per citation? Okay, all right. May I have a motion to approve the technology fee for our municipal court?
Offer a motion.
I have a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
I have seconds. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the reappointment of Mayor Lumpkin to the Victoria Evans Memorial Library Board. I've served on the board for several years. I I'd be very happy to serve, continue to serve, but if y'all would rather appoint someone else, we can consider that as well.
Why wouldn't know about it before in case we wanted to pass it?
I'm sorry.
Why wouldn't know about about this early in case we wanted to watch it?
But you you may, you may appoint someone else. It's up to the, that's up to the council. They need quarterly, um, on a Wednesday. Needs to be someone who's available during the week to attend all the meetings.
Can we put it off to the next meeting? Can we put it off to the next meeting? It's in fine silence.
Hi, Councilmember Pierce, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said. Yes, I am, uh, currently serving as the chairman of the board.
So the other thing, if I could just say, sir, the other thing, this is a format that the library board says that from state. I don't think that she was ever appointed. I think that by nature of the position of mayor, she served on the board, but now the state is saying she should be appointed. That's why it's coming for you all to appoint her. But she's already serving on the board.
Uh, just keep in mind, if if y'all want to appoint someone else, we do contribute twenty-two thousand dollars a year to the library. We need somebody who will be available to attend all of the meetings and keep us, uh, aware of any changes or anything like that.
Can we give twenty-two thousand?
That's what you give the library. He hasn't, we give the library twenty. Twenty-two hundred.
That's with twenty-two thousand dollars a year we contribute to the library. She know they're nonprofit. They, I think the county contributes, uh, twenty-five thousand a year. They may have gone up.
So it's two percent of the way up.
No, that that, you're talking about, um, sports. So that, what she's talking about has nothing to do with sports.
Offer a motion to re- want to.
Thank you. I have a motion to reappoint, uh, myself, Mayor Lumpkin, to the library board.
A second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And I I truly feel like it's an honor to serve on the library board. And the new, the new, um, director has gotten so many new programs started, and she's getting children much more involved in the library. Uh, she's, she's been real good for our library. Uh, thank you.
You got something to add before we get off of that?
Yes, sir.
I'm talking to a fellow councilman right now. If she can't remember how to go down and what number we on here, so how she gonna be on the library? She can't even keep up what number we on. Just reading the list, just being ready. That why I want to put it off to the next meeting? But we don't pass it, let's move on.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, um, speaking on issues with the city, Councilmember John Burgess.
First thing I'd like to speak on is our newspaper. First thing I'd like to speak on is Easter Sunday compared to the ant festival. There's no one over Easter Sunday. People just come to the park. Ain't nobody charging nobody coming to the park. Ain't nobody got nobody out there catering at the park or nothing. But to keep getting compared to the ant festival, I think is dead wrong. Ain't nobody telling nobody to come out, ain't nobody gathering nobody. And for the paper, it said that John Burgess contributed something. I didn't contribute nothing. I think they need, we can't in the newspaper. Ain't give nobody no money for nothing. Ain't tell nobody to use my name. They said two of the council supported it. I didn't support anything. I didn't get anybody no money for nothing. And another thing I seen in the paper, where the mayor was talking about, that we need to go to, um, she may need to take me to, um, eth, the Board of Ethics. Why would you take somebody to the Board of Ethics that speak truth? And nothing I said was a lie. If you don't believe me, all you got to do is just, um, do what you call it, order to write it, and and then you can see it for yourself. I mean, make no sense what's going on. I mean, we just seen it tonight. Time after time, three time out of sixteen times, you lose where your spot were yet. We forget on the water treatment, on the, on the draw, on the drawdown. I mean, make no sense. Anybody think I'm lying, I think I'm just picking on the mayor? All you got to do is just write it in. And with the DDA, have no have no board, have no minutes. Do an open record request. How long I taking this Burgess' word for what? Just do it yourself. Do an open record request. She got to give it to you. She got to produce it, which I know you ain't gonna see now. And then these guys came up with the idea to do a, a guard for the city, for the people. She wanted to shut it down, said that we can't take, we can't take city money and buy plants and stuff and then give it away. But we do the same thing on Halloween. We go buy candy and give it away. Cause that what they wanna do. But what we wanna do, so she wanna shut it down. Tell me what's the difference in buying candy and giving it away with city money and giving it away? And then sit there and they go buy a guard and the whole community out there have been planted guard, kids and all, and then give the food away. Somebody explain that to me. But I'm picking on the mayor. I'm picking on the elderly lady.
I I think the, uh, city attorney could explain that.
City attorney can't explain nothing to me. We hire him.
Okay.
There is no difference. There's nothing the city attorney can tell me about that, unless he ain't got no sense. Cause one is no greater than the other. It's still city money and you still buying stuff and you still giving it away.
What what's supposed to be the issue with that?
The issue originally was that it was coming out of the general fund. It it looked like it would run out of gratuities.
And y'all, and y'all probably might have thought, I, we can't give you back your. Mine ain't worth it.
It's not worth it.
They not worth it.
It would be a gratuities clause issue, which means that the government can't give away money, it's taxpayer money. If the government's gonna use taxpayer money, it must be.
If the government is going to use taxpayer money, it must be benefited.
What money we giving away? They giving away food.
It's purchasing products to give away.
So- so- so we wrong, we can't, I'm having a week, same time?
I was just approaching, said that there is a separate fund, that, uh, tourism fund and that we may be able to work it out.
So- so basically we just need to get the tourist fund and use it?
Right.
Yes, I- I-
So who's on the tourist fund? I won't.
We are.
Okay, right.
Well, I say we, the council.
Do- do we right, we- do we need to reimburse that money and just put it from?
No, we do not. We can use the tourism money to do it, we- he and I been going back and forth with it to make sure that it was legal, so we don't have to reimburse it, we can use tourism because, um, that's what it's for. So we're- we're good at that.
Whatever you end up thinking, cause I want to move forward with this.
We're still fleshing it out, but we're working on it. We're trying to make sure that we follow the laws of, of the queer. We're making sure that we don't violate the gratuities clause.
How much longer it gonna take?
We'll be ready for the next meeting.
It's a whole month.
No, we don't have season in the ground for me. We don't have-
We start playing.
We- we can be ready whenever.
We- we'll have to wait.
So am I- am I understanding, Ms. Burgess, that you want us to shut down trick or treating the streets?
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying at the same time, that's all I'm saying.
We're just comparing the two.
I'm comparing the two, just like they compare Easter Sunday to the Antfestival.
Uh, that is a great idea, Mayor Lumpkin. You want to be involved, I mean, what's your- what's your discretion with it? What's your problem with the community garden?
With what?
The community garden, what's your problem with it?
Oh, I had no problem and I was all for it. I had no idea it was not legal to put it on city property and spend city money. I had no objection. I'm s- I don't know where that got, how that got out, I thought it was a great idea. And then I discovered through just questioning that it was not legal. I had no objection, I thought it was a great idea.
Um, can you ask Ms. Pierce, cause I think she was objecting to it at one point.
Ms. Pierce, did you object to the community garden?
I'm not objecting to the community garden, that's not my project, you and Carter decided on that. You know, my project, I went for it, but then I have planned that I couldn't use my own project to do it, we got-
You do? Did you hear that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I mean, she told me privately, she was, um, she went for it, so I just want to put on record, see what she said with it now.
I didn't tell you in the private that I was looking for, when you were talking about that garden, I told you that Mister, um, complimentary had asked me about the garden and whether you brought up the garden at its Patricia Perry's feet and I was like, that's fine, well, I'll go ahead with the garden. That was the core reason, just the council, the core yard project from the start. I've never been against a garden, man, I've been and planted a garden every year, it's beautiful, man.
Okay, I'm not gonna beat the bed, but okay, thank you.
And please understand, I was, I had no objection to the garden.
I don't hold it back.
I just wasn't looking for my beauty to have it, you know, ever since I've been in this department. Thank you, Ms. Pierce.
You don't have a head, Mayor.
Uh, did you have anything else, Mr. Burgess?
No.
Uh, if not, we, uh, we do need to go into executive session.
We have more higher, we need to splash that.
Yeah, we need to go to a conclusion about splash, that we're gonna move forward, putting the equipment up or we just gonna stand still with it and wait till after, um, Georgia City will? We need to, I mean, we all the time, we need to leave twenty seconds, so my- my thing is who- who- who's putting it- who's putting the equipment together? They said stand still.
The people that we ordered before, don't they do it?
Well, they won't give you any time enough to do it.
Oh, okay, I see.
So what we did, what we did is, is initially, we ordered the equipment with the intent that the city workers was gonna put it together. So then today, we- we hit a hiccup with it being put on hold, so we went back to the, uh, vendor who sold it to us to try to schedule with them to, uh, put it together. So we got a quote for six thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars to install it, but it has a three weeks, a three week window, which mean we won't have it on the twenty-sixth, if we get- if we take this right. I personally think that our- our city employees can put it together. In fact, that came straight from Mr. Chetfield, he said they could do it. I just need some guidance from the council on which way to go with it.
I would want, just want to go ahead and get it in. If I need to help, I would.
No, I feel the same.
Uh, you know, speaking of the playground equipment and, um, uh, Mr. Burgess's opinion about my, um, actions, et cetera. The Downtown Development Authority donated seven thousand dollars to the playground equipment. If you object to that, we can certainly take our seven thousand dollars back. No?
I mean, you know, it's, you know, my person be spending on DDA, but if you know it, without a board. You just saying that cause-
The board approved they-
You just saying that because they want to go ahead and get it in. See that what type of person you are.
The big picture, this for the petition, this for the citizen, we turn that in.
Right, and that why we trying to get more.
So we don't want to-
You gonna get all the money back that DDA was-
What we gonna do, we gonna do the equipment or not?
I said we do it.
Okay.
Again, that's what we did.
Right.
Do we need to take a vote? I make a whole show up?
No, that's not necessary, thank you.
Mr. Hall, let me know when I get all the time. Could I say something? It's very short. Very, very short.
Council members?
It be- it don't hurt nobody, I didn't want to say it.
Anyone object?
It's very short.
Well, you're all decided. Alright, Mr. Walker.
Sometimes, and I'm not a councilman. I've been a commissioner, but I'm- I'm not a councilman. Something like this issue going on with- with, uh, Councilman Shelton, you all could have had a call meeting and took care of it yourself. Still breaking the fourth, if town ran out, you could have called a call meeting and discussed it and voted on it and you could have brought the board of council into me and said, listen, we had a call meeting and we decided we gonna do this and forgot to throw this vote.
I'm- I'm all. I have a question for her.
Referring to, time, you know, you saying time is running out on fixing the playground. And some stuff you really don't have to-
No, it just came about today, so I had to do it today.
Oh, no, I'm just saying if a county, and sometimes, if it come in the near future, if something come up early, you don't have to wait to the day of the council committee. I understand what you, listen-
It came today.
I know that, I understand that, but I'm just saying in the future, if something come up early, like maybe last week, it said it come up last week.
I'm fully aware that happened.
Okay, alright, and that's what I'm saying. Not- not that it just come up today, I'm just saying, you know, it would come up next week or something, come up, just go ahead and have a call meeting and get it done.
We have done that before.
Okay, it just, I'm gonna- I'm gonna pay the taxpayer and I have to write this, say anything I want to say.
I am too.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Uh, there being no further, uh, business on the agenda, I will ask for a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of-
Litigation.
Litigation. May I have a motion?
I have a motion.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you all for being here.